Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. It's 8:30, and we will begin the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting. And Vice Chair Diane Jones, who usually leads this meeting, has a conflict with other meetings this morning and will probably be coming in later if she's able to. But we will open this meeting with public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address us this morning? Seeing none, we'll head on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have support as well. Any conversation, any discussion on this? Seeing none, we will...
Hold on, favor.
Pardon?
We need to vote on the motion.
We will vote on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's been a long time since I've done this. All those opposed.
We'll help you out, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm counting on you to do that this morning. All those opposed, there were none, so the consent agenda is approved. Next up, Kent County Community Action, to approve the Action Annual Plan and Budget Amendment.
Yes.
Is there a motion to...
Let me read first.
Oh, you're going to read it first.
For the cameras.
I really am unpracticed at this.
You're good. So, this is a request to the Board to approve the Kent County Community Action Plan for July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, to authorize the Board Chair or designated to execute the documents related to the plan and approve extensions and changes within 15 percent of the original award, and to appropriate $3,065,000... Yeah, $65,526 in revenue to the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership and Emergency Solutions Grant contingent upon receipt of award and execution of contract. Kent County has qualified as an urban county, which makes it eligible to receive funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for its 37th year as an entitlement community. The five-year extended consolidation plan for July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2021 consists of a needs assessment, market analysis, and related goals and objectives, and a prerequisite of obtaining CDBG, home, and ESG funding from HUD. The grant application referred to as the Annual Action Plan contains a description and budget for CDBG, home, ESG-funded activities proposed to be undertaken between July 1, 2018, and June 30, 2019, including CDBG projects requested by some of the 32 local units of government. As of May 2, 2018, HUD has notified Kent County Community Action of its final federal appropriation for the 2018-19 CDBG home and ESG program. The application allocates $3,065,526 in funding that includes CDBG of $1,759,497, home of $979,922, and ESG of $136,428, and recognizes an additional $45,000 anticipated program income from the CDBG Housing Realization Program and $144,679 received from home as program income.
So moved.
Support. Okay, we have a motion and support. Is there discussion?
So, what... How large of an increase, if there is an increase, is this over last year's? Is there some increase?
Good morning, Commissioners. It is a slight increase in CDBG funding, about $150,000, I believe. And then the ESG funding this year, we came back into formula two years ago, or three years ago, we had received ESG funding directly from HUD. Then we fell out of formula for two years, and now we're back in formula for the $144,000, thereabouts. Excuse me, $136,000 in ESG funding for homeless services.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Matthew, Commissioner Breevy just finished the lead task force study, that ESG or any other program through HUD. Is there any available funds that may be...
Yep. So, the CDBG program, the home rehab program, we can do lead abatement and remediation through that program. And so, anywhere out county, so anywhere in the county except Grand Rapids or Wyoming are eligible if there's lead in the house that we can do work through that program. We also partner with another grant that we have received from the state of Michigan called the CHIP program. And we just received our first referral for that program as well. So, we do have direct funding to help homeowners.
Follow-up, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. So, the reason it's just out county because Grand Rapids and Wyoming have their own program.
Correct, Commissioner. Yep.
Got it.
Commissioner Antor.
Morning, Matthew. On CDBG, will there be any changes as to how those funds could be applied? Because it seems like every year at this time, I'll get calls from townships and so forth.
Yeah, we last year worked through a task force with our local officials from several townships, as well as municipalities that participate. And we do, we have a three-year pilot now. So, rather than provide mini grants to local units of government to do small projects, they agreed that we would do an RFP process, a Request for Proposal process, where they would submit larger projects for funding, and that we would review those all at once and then select those. So, we did that this year, and we will be coming forward at some point to give you an update on those projects that were selected after we get through all the compliance and regulatory work. So, we did change that process, and with the support of our local township officials and local government municipality officials.
Follow-up quickly. On the compliance component of this, is it going to be less restrictive on what they can do, or is it just the amount of money they're getting is going to be...
Yeah, I think it's less restrictive because we've taken a much more proactive stance in wanting to work with the locals to find projects that they want to support that fit within our consolidated plan. And because of the small amounts historically, that put a limit. So, we've opened that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote on this. All those in favor of adoption of the Kent County Community Action Plan? Say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, so it is adopted. Does this pass on then to the full board?
Yes.
Okay, this will be taken up again. Next up is another Kent County Community Action. This is for the annual budget for the weatherization assistance program.
Sure, I'll read that. This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve the Kent County Community Action Weatherization Assistance Program funding from the United States Department of Energy and appropriate $610,275 in revenue to the 2018-2019 DOE contingent upon receipt of award and execution of contract, approve extensions and changes within 15 percent of the original award, and authorize the Board Chair or its designated to execute the agreements. Kent County Community Action has received notification of its pending allocation with the Department of Energy for funds for the 45th consecutive year since 1973. Kent County Community Action has weatherized over 8,000 dwellings since the inception of the Weatherization Assistance Program in Kent County, and expects to add 68 units or dwellings within this funding. The allocation of $610,275 includes funding for administrative, supportive, and technical training expenses, as well as labor and materials, and health and safety measures installed in customers' dwellings. The grant period is from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there support? Support? And we have support. Discussion on this particular item. I'll ask one question, and that is, you know, when you're talking the weatherization, you're often talking improvements that also might help with the lead abatement of homes. Is that true?
Potentially. The goal is to put resources together from CDBG and weatherization where appropriate. So, what we can pay for, this is a grant program, so whatever we can pay for something through the grant program for weatherization and eligibility, we'll do that. And then add CDBG resources for a loan if need be for abatement of lead or other things. So, we can work these programs together. But it's really the details of the staff that have to do a site assessment on the home. So, I can't really give you a blanket answer, Commissioner.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And just so you know, there's about $65,000 more this year in this grant than last year.
Commissioner Antor.
How are these units, dwellings, picked out? I mean, where does...
People come to the county, and oftentimes, we get referrals for utility assistance. When a family comes and needs a utility help, we look to see if their home has been weatherized. And if it hasn't, we try to work with them to add the insulation and other measures so that, to reduce their energy assistance.
There's some criteria they have to follow then?
Correct.
Is first come, first served?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote on this motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And it is passed for forwarding on to the full board. Sheriff's Department's up next with the correction facility, the female housing unit, a CIP project with supplemental appropriation.
Take that one again. This is a request to the Board to appropriate an additional $44,370 to the female housing unit wall project in the 2018 capital improvement program budget from the 2018 Corrections and Detention Milage Fund budget. The county Board of Commissioners originally appropriated $106,000 to the CIP fund budget for the female housing unit wall project via Resolution 122117105 to change the configuration of the housing units to efficiently maintain levels of separation required by policy and best practices. The budget estimate to complete the approved project has increased from $106,000 to $150,370 due to an increase of $369,975 to engage a general contractor and an increased cost for masonry resulting from industry demands. The $7,395 balance is to maintain a 20 percent project contingency. It is recommended that $44,370 be appropriated from the 2018 Correction and Detention Milage Fund budget to the 2018 CIP fund budget to complete the female housing unit wall project.
Support.
It is moved, and it is supported. Commissioners Mast and Morgan, is there discussion on this? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at this, and we almost have, almost a 33 percent increase in the budget. Did we miss our bogey that badly with our construction estimates, or...
There was a change in direction. So, we were originally going to do the contracting portion ourselves, and it was decided to be best done by a general contractor, so that added a layer, if you will. And then, when we originally received the estimates for the masonry work, we're starting the project approximately a year later, and the increased costs with the demands of the industry resulted in an increase in that as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, responding for the Sheriff's Department today is Chuck DeWitt.
Yes. Chuck DeWitt, Cheatsville, Texas. Thank you. Sorry, well, that...
Any other questions?
I just have a follow-up.
Me.
Just a process question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, this is coming from the Detention Milage, and it's going to our CIP. It's coming from the Detention Milage Funds being set aside in our CIP, and that's what we're voting on.
And those can be used for that purpose, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
I was just, is the footprint of the facility staying the same? You're doing this with them?
Yeah, so we have one big housing unit right now that's going to be split in half. And what that allows is better management between the different populations. So, if we have a number of different personality differences, conflicts, we can manage it between two separate housing units instead of just one, where we typically have to restrict date and time.
Entire correctional facility where you're housing prisoners is going to be cut in half, or a segment of that is going to be cut in half?
Nope. So, this is one housing unit.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's being split in half.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will vote on the resolution here to, for the funding, the change in the funding for this project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, it is approved. Next up, facilities management.
Stand.
Pardon?
No, I just said stand.
Okay. Facilities management, the assignment of dispatch addition construction project, adding that to the Kent County Building Authority responsibilities.
Okay, this is a request to the Board to assign project management responsibilities for the Central Dispatch Act addition to the Kent County Building Authority. Negotiations with the city of Grand Rapids continue on the potential public safety answering point, PSAP consolidation. If the negotiations result in agreement to consolidate, the consolidated PSAP would commence operations from the Kent County Central Dispatch Center in July 2019. To house a consolidated PSAP, the county determined additional space would be necessary. In order to meet the July 2019 deadline, to be ready to commence consolidated operations, construction planning, and bidding must occur in June 2018. County construction projects of this nature and complexity and projects financed through the sale of bonds are assigned to the Kent County Building Authority. The project management assignment lasts until all bonds are paid in full. The area where the proposed addition would be constructed is an area of the Sheriff's Department's previously assigned to the Building Authority in connection with a prior construction project. The Building Authority generally meets once a month on the first Wednesday of each month. If the negotiations do not result in consolidation of PSAPs, the addition construction will not go forward.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll move it for discussion.
Okay, support? Is there support? And we have support from Commissioner Breevy? Discussion?
Yeah. I have a concern here. I don't see an estimated dollar amount, but we're going to make a commitment to a point, I understand that, but we have not yet negotiated the contract or the coming together.
Yeah, that's, this is a really...
Why, why is this a necessary movement today?
Because of the timeline required to get the project constructed, and there are several moving parts, and I will have Sheriff's Department come up and to explain the detail of it, or facilities. It will require us moving ahead with identifying how we're going to manage the construction of it. And we have to decide whether or not this is going to be something that the Building Authority would handle. And we have to get this in the queue. However, we're still, you're correct, we're still in negotiations with the city of Grand Rapids regarding the merger of the two PSAPs. And it's, and it's likely that it could be pushed out. We don't know. But if it does move forward in the month of June and July, we need to move ahead and get agreement around the Building Authority managing the project if it was to move forward. So, this is why it's coming forward today. But if it doesn't happen, it comes back off the table, we're not committing any dollars today to the project at all. It's simply readying ourselves so that if, in fact, we do get agreement, we're in a position to move it forward.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is more or less moving the pieces around the chessboard to be ready.
Yes.
In case there is some agreement with the city to consolidate. Now, my question is, I get, I get being ready and all that, and I understand that it's all got to come back to us for a vote for the bonding and all of that. But I guess my, my big question is, where's the city at in their negotiations? And I feel like there's a lot of moving parts in here, and are we putting the cart in front of the horse, so to speak? Because I'm not sure where the city is in their negotiation, and I don't know if they have the political will to do this, so...
And that could very well be. The concern would be, if, in fact, they do come to the table with an agreement to move it forward with conditions that meet our needs, we need to be in a position to move it forward because of the timing. And I'll let Michelle explain some of this.
Just one, but the bottom line is, we're going to be controlling this, correct? I mean, we're going to be, this is going to be our project.
Correct.
And we're going to be the overseers of this project, correct?
Correct. So, I just want to talk one second about the timing. It is critical that if we are going to do a consolidation, that we do it in conjunction with the 800 radio megahertz project. And that timeline is next summer, that we think that's going to be installing. And so, what we don't want to do is to delay the installation of the radio system for everybody else in the county. There are some radio failures that are happening. We've talked about that before. That's the reason we're doing the project. It's a critical project. So, if not for having this come and be prepared to go to the Building Authority, it would push our timeline back substantially. And if it does that, it could impact the installation of the radio project. So, that's why you're considering that today, even though we do not yet have a contract. And then, to address your contract issue, we are being diligent about ensuring that the contract conditions that are acceptable to the county are being communicated, and then if they come to fruition, they'll be executed. But we are, we still have a substantial amount of conversation yet to happen with the city. There are issues that we are still trying to work through, and I don't, I don't have a strong opinion either way of whether or not that contract will come to fruition. So, I, we, this is a preparatory.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. So, Michelle, the city could push back our timeline by delaying this and not coming to any kind of decision, or putting off that decision, so...
They could, and absolutely, they could ask us to consider to take the contract, but to take it at a later date, and we'll consider that. But what we are working through right now is a transition in July of 2019. There will be additional cost if it's done later. The reason for that is there will be equipment that's installed on the PSAP building itself, and then the equipment that is in a dispatch center to run the 800 radio systems, they'll be installed in the city of Grand Rapids after July of 2019. And if that happens, moving them sounds like a very easy thing to do. We just pick them up, move it. It's probably a $300,000 expense to move these radio consoles from that center over to the new center. So, there's a reason, it's a significant reason we're trying to stay on schedule. Big dollar amounts here. And it's, it's planned as part of the radio project to install it there. But we could transition that install to the county, and that obviously is the most efficient thing to do.
So, Lynn is going to be charged with developing some kind of contract that I can understand. Good luck, Linda, okay?
I'll keep it on a single page for you.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. So, we were making a commitment of investment of time in this, and does the other partner know these kind of dollars are being spent by the county in this project? And to say we're not spending any money today, we're spending time. Time costs money.
Absolutely. They've been told we are dedicating these resources. I wish I could tell you the number of man-hours we already have involved in considering this contract request. It is not a, an easy consideration. The contract negotiations are very detailed. The level of commitment has been, you know, Wayman's been involved substantially before him, Darryl was. I've been involved, my whole staff been involved. We have a substantial amount of time in considering this. And that's why it's really, really important that we work the entire process. We vet this question thoroughly at this point, because otherwise, all that is for not.
Darryl?
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. Morning, Michelle.
Morning.
Is the city of Grand Rapids tentatively on board with some of the stuff as far as the location of it being at the Kent County Sheriff's Department? Is that something they've agreed to at this point, that that would be...
So, you know, I guess to the extent that we've continued to plan around that notion, yes. That we, we were approached by them to contract with us, and we said our contract would be at our, at our site, and we continued to communicate about the contract after that.
And that site is going to be within the confines of Yale, or the, your facility?
Correct.
And it's been, already been set aside for this type of use?
Correct. Yes, it's actually an extension on the back of our current dispatch center, where we're able to take advantage of the infrastructure that's already there.
Okay. That was my other question. I didn't know if it has to be contiguous with your current place or not?
Yes.
Because of the potential of another building potentially for sale.
Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Chair. I called and talked with Wayman yesterday to try and clarify this, because it seemed like asking a lot for not, not much return, at least at this point. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear again, that with our agreeing to this, all we are doing is saying that the bids can go forward, that we're on board, but before we would... we would invest any dollars, the entire board would be part of that decision, am I correct in this?
Correct, this is, yes, you are correct. We're assigning this project to the Building Authority, for them to process the work.
But I'm not speaking for my other board members who are not present, as far as whether or not we even go forward in this whole idea, we're just saying-
Correct.
We are on board with looking into going forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Al Geno is here from our Facilities Management Department, and perhaps he could explain the Building Authority and how that process works, so you all understand what we're doing.
Good morning.
Morning.
Under Sheriff has shared a lot about the needs of the dispatcher, you're familiar with the dispatch center and what we need to do? Yes, it would be about a 5,000 square foot addition. I want to clarify, we are spending some money on some minor consulting work, in order to get us this far, to say about how big would it need to be? But it's, we have that in our Facilities Management consultant budget. Periodically, we use that to consult on special projects or special needs. So some money is expended, but it's, the substantial funds, should this contract go through, then it would of course come back to you.
Okay.
Our urgency on this is a couple things hold. One is, we estimate we have about, if everything went very well, we have about a 46-week construction timeline, and we would have ideally about a four-month of architectural engineering work to do. Put those together, and we're already about four months behind. It's nobody's fault, it's just the way it comes. We will be fast-tracking this and concurrently working with a little bit of a design-build module. Again, we're working with an architect that has already designed a K building and our existing superstructure there, so adding on to that is a little easier with the architectural work, and they can expedite some of their work. Some of the construction timelines are weather-dependent, but we would hope everything would go well. It's only about 5,000 square foot, so it's not like we're building something 40,000 square feet, but there is a tremendous amount involved. I don't think the medical community would appreciate, perhaps, my similarity to it, but it's like adding on to an operating room. There's, you need quietness, but you need to do heavy construction. It's quite a technological project. We're asking that we move to the Building Authority so we can expedite the process, and they're always familiar with construction projects. We have a meeting tomorrow that we can introduce this potential project to them, just as that, as a potential project, but at least they can start wrapping their heads around what might be coming to them in the near weeks and months to come. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, that helped, thanks so much. And thank you.
Al, I get the logistical issue. What I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with is the waiting on the city to make a decision that's going to impact-
Yeah, yeah.
-our decision. So, the timing, to me, isn't the best. I understand the logistics of it, but the timing, I just have a concern.
No, I don't think anyone wants to be in this position, but the facts remain, and Under Sheriff shared the ramifications of if we aren't ready to go in July, and one way or the other, we will be, if this project comes to fruition. We're doing that balancing between asking our architectural engineering firm and asking potential construction managers to say, be with us, because this might happen, but we don't want to expend a lot of time and a lot of effort, but we need enough to, every week that goes by, it just gets tighter. And ultimately, what could happen, if too much time goes by and the deadline doesn't change, it'll still happen, it just costs substantially more. So we're trying to do that balancing between.
Commissioner, may I ask?
Well, I assume the decision about the size of the building hinges on whether or not we consolidate, doesn't it?
The whole thing would just be scrapped, we won't do it.
Oh, we don't need that addition, because if we maintain a separate, okay.
Correct. Now, all is not lost, because someday, realistically, might need be addition, so some of the planning work that we do, all is not lost, it can be filed and saved for a later date.
Drive in the bus.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Under Sheriff. Will we move ahead with the 800 megahertz, no matter which? Because that was my thing from day one, when we started 911, we should be on the 800.
Come, no matter circumstance, we are moving ahead with that project. And actually, that has to do with the timeline that we gave the city, and we've told the city that you cannot extend with your consideration past July, or we're going to go forward with the radio project, and if there's ever consolidation, it would be years to follow after we've completed that project and have other time available to reconsider a consolidation. So this is kind of a go or no-go point for the city, and for that matter, the county, on this topic.
Thank you, thanks for your work.
So if we pass this here, and the board accepts it and passes it, will we be notified if and when that happens? Yes, because we probably won't be notified anything officially, until we have to spend money. Sure, we will notify you, and we'll be brought back to the board, of course, absolutely. You will get a chance to look at this. We're hoping that this resolves itself in the month of June, we hope that we'll be back in front of you at some time in July, we're hopeful that this will move forward. We've had numerous conversations, we've had many meetings, we've had a lot of pushing and challenging that has been going on. It's not been an easy lift for the sheriff or this office to get us to where we are, but we're hopeful that we'll resolve it with the city of Grand Rapids, that they will be wise about how we can reduce the cost and expense of the service and realize the benefit for the community at large. We know that this is a win-win, it's just how can we get the willing at the table to agree that this is something that, this is a change that needs to occur for the benefit of the county as a whole.
Commissioner Henshaw.
What does the city of Grand Rapids have to lose by kicking this down the road a little bit further? Are they, is their cost going to go up as well? Get stalled out and they wait?
There is an operational savings for them, so I guess you could imagine that any point that you don't consolidate, there continues to be that operational cost that you're not saving. So there's that, and yes, you know, the transition costs, the way we have it documented currently are all the city's. So if there are additional transition costs, because they have delayed the decision, then those costs would be their own. But I will say, we will not be willing to do a consolidation in the middle of the transition of the radio project, so if they miss that window, they will have to wait until we have resources available again to consider it.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yep.
Okay. I have a question. So what other decision points, I mean, I can see that there are other decisions, major decisions, this is like, as Commissioner Morgan said, sort of the cart before the horse type of thing. What are the major decisions that we will need to be making? And that will be, you know, in terms of the building, the bonding, absorption of employees, you know, what are the other decisions that will be major for this?
So I'll talk about the ones from the sheriff's office. What typically will happen if we have a contract is that we'll bring the contract back in front of you with all the conditions that are part of that contract, and it will go in front of finance for the financial part of it, and LHR, because it will include substantial human resource additions. This one's a little bit unique, because we will be negotiating maybe some retention bonuses, or that type of thing with the current staff at Grand Rapids to get them to make the transition, because it's very difficult for us to hire that many people all at once, it'd be quite expensive. So you would see those requests in front of you, but first you would see just the contract, then you would see the LHR request. And in terms of the bond and the building and all that, I can't answer those questions.
Yeah, the question will be whether or not this is worth bonding or not. And that will be a discussion that we'll have with finance, with our financial office. But right now, the dollar amount we're looking at for the transition cost total is about $3.5 million. Not all of that is construction, part of that has to do with staffing costs and so forth. So once we know the final number, we'll determine whether or not any of it goes to bonding, or if there's another way that we're going to split this and pay for it. We hopefully will work with the dispatch authority, and they will want to partner with this to ensure that there's a reduced amount that the city of Grand Rapids would have to expend to make the merger happen as well. So we don't know how this is all going to get netted out, we're meeting with the city of Grand Rapids in the next week, my office, the fiscal services office, to talk through how this could be put on the table, how the cost could be shared. So that decision will need to come before the board, dollar amounts, approvals, spending, and so forth. The other key piece that she talked about, similar to the Community Action Agency, when we merged that into the county, we'll have to work through the number of employees, the compensation for the employees, all of the requirements related to benefits and compensation, the HR department will have to get involved. So the personnel issues will have to take place as well. So all of that, in addition to the contract, which, of course, Linda Howell and Michelle will have to work together to finalize that. So all of those pieces will need to come before the board throughout this process. Not all at once, the personnel issues will come later.
Later.
But the issues related to moving ahead with the construction and so forth, we did receive $500,000 grant from the state of Michigan through the C-GAAP grant, requests we proposed, we wanted 3.2 million, we only got 500,000. Kalamazoo County got 2.9 million, we're wondering why that was the case. We're a larger county, larger metropolitan area, so we're not happy about that, but we're going to figure out why. But we are continuing to work alongside the city to make sure that this isn't onerous to them, so hopefully they appreciate it, what we're doing, to partner with them, there is a benefit, as Michelle said, related to the ongoing operational expenses for the city of Grand Rapids as a result of this merger.
Commissioner Henshaw.
I'm sorry, one more question. You mentioned bonding this out, how will that work? Having a partner now in the city of Grand Rapids, depending on what they ask, will that have any effects on?
Let's have Steve Duarte or Marvin, if Steve could come up to the podium. Steve, could you come up? The question, and we'll wait till you get here. Should we agree to move forward with this project? The question is whether or not there will need to be bonding, and what the cost of that would be to fund the expense of this project.
Well, that's a good question. I don't know that I exactly have the answer for that, okay? I mean, if I understand the question, we're talking about the expansion for this particular facility, and we're talking about a project that would cost probably, in the neighborhood of the estimates I'm saying, $3.5 million. At this point, I don't think I'd want to be talking bonding about that, not unless we were rolling that into a bigger package. I mean, the cost of issue bonds and outside council ratings, I just don't think it's a cost-effective way to move. So at this point, I can't tell you. Interest rates have moved up a little bit, they're still favorable. I guess it's one of those decisions you make when you see how much money you need to finish this project off and anything else the board may want to consider.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
Hello, I think the question was if it was going to impact our bond rating. So if we did something like this with the city, would the city be a partner at all, or is it all just us?
No.
At this point, I think that's still open to debate. I would certainly hope when we'd be discussing that, that was one of the things I intended to talk to the Under Sheriff after this meeting about, but at this point, nothing's set in stone.
Yeah, the bond rating, impact on the bond rating, no. We mentioned this when we spoke with the bond rating agency, the potential of this project going forward, and of course, as you know, we were affirmed both by Modi's and Standards and Poor's, AAA. So at this point, no, they see this as a quality of life, improving the community, they see this as a positive.
I have a follow-up. Does this involve adding more union negotiating contracts to our mix, and if so, how many?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
It's for Michelle.
Yes, it does, yeah.
They would join our existing group that represents the dispatchers, but that transition to that group is what we'd probably be working through with their current union, and there are two of them that represent the staff at the city who would be coming over. So initially, we'd have to talk with their group, their contract actually expires in July of 2019, so they would not come over with us.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So if we build this facility, the authority's going to pay for it, correct?
I don't have any of those answers.
Right, I mean, this is down the road, all the, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but I just want the commissioners to understand that this is going to be a real heavy lift for the sheriff's department. And we're taking on personnel that are paid at a different grade, it's a huge transition. It's, just keep in mind, it's going to be a very heavy lift for the sheriff's department.
I would echo that.
It's all I got to say about that.
Well, but we've got very competent personnel who can handle that.
Just saying, it's going to be a big process.
Because the end result is what we're all interested to achieve within our community.
I would say the end result is the best-case scenario for our community and everybody that resides in it, yes. The end result of a consolidated dispatch that can move strategically, more effectively, and in concert, is where we need to be aiming. It doesn't mean it wouldn't be painful getting there, but we need to try to look at the big picture, and I think this is a good move in the context of the big picture.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seeing none, that is approved. Next up, we hear from Commissioner Stan Steck, and it's on the mental health funding update, the most recent, today's news.
Good morning, commissioners. It has been suggested to me that it's not particularly prudent to appear before your colleagues in a public meeting where you give them unlimited opportunity to grill you. Nevertheless, here I am, so have at it. So you have heard me talk about behavioral health, probably ad nauseam, over the course of the last six months, but the process through this, through this negotiations with the state over the course of the last six months brings us to a point where we're going to make an ask to the county. So I want to set today a little bit of the background for that, give you a little presentation on some of the funding structures in which this request comes, then I'm going to ask Jeff Laban, who is our interim CEO, to talk a little bit about some of the chronology of what we're looking at. So since last fall, the LRE, Lake Shore Regional Entity, has aggressively been looking at some strategies of how we can better facilitate, better stabilize the provision of behavioral health services through the seven county area. You'll recall that Lake Shore Regional Entity is the Region III PIHP, that is, the entity, the public entity that's under contract with the state to administer all the services that are provided in this region, including Medicaid services, Healthy Michigan services, autism, and substance use disorder services. In this process, we have been negotiating with the state and dealing with the state over a number of issues, and it is probably no surprise to you that we don't particularly see eye-to-eye with the state on a number of these items, including what is the best process to use, what is the best formula to go forward with, and how do we structure and stabilize the system. That disagreement has brought us to the point of potential litigation with the state. We have come precariously close to that, and frankly, may still end up there, depending upon what transpires. But we have concluded that while we are, of course, right, the process of litigating these disputes may not be in the best interest of the public. Now personally, I will say litigating, I think is a wonderful thing, but from a public policy perspective, it may not be in the best interest, as I've said. And that's because to proceed with this, simply to draw the lines in the sand, risk- And that's because to proceed with this, simply to draw the lines in the sand, risks the entire system. It may be that the state ultimately then pulls the contract without a resolution. That in turn means a complete disruption of the funding services, a complete disruption of the flow of cash to our providers, and ultimately, the potential breach in services to consumers. That's a risk that we would certainly want to avoid if we can. So, what we've done is we've designed and have now proposed a strategy for the system to manage some of the risk. This is an insurance pooling concept and structure. So, this is a designed, a formula that would address some of the risk in the system through a mechanism called an auxiliary ISF fund. That's been submitted to the state. The state has reviewed it, and the state has now tentatively approved that, indicating that that would be an acceptable, acceptable mechanism for purposes of meeting these mandates of having a risk plan. We believe it is ultimately a relatively low-risk strategy, and it is one that has a relatively high capacity of stabilizing the system and allowing it to go forward. The AISF, Auxiliary ISF Fund, is a tentative conditional fund, structure which would call for some funding from participants, stakeholders, community entities, if the need arises. If the need arises, a draw would be made, would be submitted, a draw would be made, and ultimately, a repayment structure would be implemented. That's why I say it's relatively low-risk. It is only triggered in the event that there's a need. It is only then granted to the extent of the commitment, and is then under a structure of repayment. So, it is, it's a little, it's a little complicated, but you, you let me do PowerPoint, and this is what happens, by the way. I put a little sketch together here that, that the executive committee has seen already, so I'm going to flow through it as quickly as I can to let you know where this ISF system fits within the overall structure. And let's start with all the funding. All of the funding in this system really generates from the federal government. It starts with CMS. We're talking about the Healthy Michigan and the Medicaid funds. Both of those are principally funded by the federal government. Healthy Michigan, 95 percent. Medicaid, at this point, about 63, 64 percent. It's all covered by the federal government. They in turn will distribute that to the state, and the department involved is the MDHHS. They will then supplement that with the state funding. 5 percent now for Healthy Michigan and about 36 percent for, for Medicaid. What they do then is determine a capitated rate. That is, they look at what's the cost to provide services that are mandated under law? What does that cost over the course of the last two years? How many enrollees do we have in this system? And then, they'll distill that down to a per-enrollee dollar amount. So, in this system, we have about 260,000 enrollees in this region. 260,000. Those are individuals enrolled in both Medicaid and Healthy Michigan. So, the actuaries determine a capitated rate to determine how much do they pay to the various PHPs based upon how many enrollees and what does it cost? So, that comes down to about $27, $28, $30 per enrollee per month that gets paid from the state to this system. In addition to that, there is a limited payment of a bonus pool, that is, a performance bonus pool. And the distinction there is that this is money that is not subject to the same restrictions, that is, the Healthy Michigan and Medicaid funding. And that's important when it gets to this payback structure. All of those funds are then distributed to the 10 PHPs. In this case, it's the Lake Shore Regional Entity. The Lake Shore Regional Entity is entitled to receive the funds and administer them across the seven county area. In doing that, they're obligated to assure that all of the state mandated services within this area are provided. These are not discretionary. We can't pick and choose. If an enrollee requests services that they're qualified to receive, we must pay for it. And that's true in each of the counties. In order to see that that happens, what we do is we repay that money, distribute it under a formula to each of the CMH members within the region, and there are five of them. Network 180, which is the Kent County one, has 132,000, 104 enrollees in those two programs. Ottawa County, 34,000. Alligan County, 21,000. Health West, which is Muskegon, has 52,000. And West Michigan, which is a consortium of three counties up north, have 18,697. So, the funds are distributed then from the LRE to each of these five CMHs, Community Health Agencies. They in turn either directly provide or contract with our key providers, such as Hope Network, Pine Rest, Forest View, and others. And in so doing, those funds are incurred by way of contracting to provide services. In turn, they are the ones that provide the frontline services to these 260,000 enrollees. Now, the problem with this system is, as I have said and others have said all along, is this system functions as long as it's completely stable. And unfortunately, there's nothing stable about it. The costs of services are always fluctuating. The number of individuals enrolling is always fluctuating. The, the funding is always fluctuating because it's subject to decisions at both the federal and the state level. So, there's lots of variables in the system. And acknowledgement of that, well, the other variable is just the administrative cost of trying to create these beasts. Lake Shore Regional Entity was created in 2014. It's a relatively new intergovernmental entity. Those aren't easy to create, as we all know, and they're certainly not easy to create in an efficient and, and smooth manner. And there's been hiccups with the LRE. So, all of those hiccups, all of those variables are supposed to be cushioned with this shock observer called the ISF. That's the pool of funds that's supposed to be there so that if it costs too much, you can draw on it. If you get a little extra, you can put it back in. It's that cushion that's the heart of this current issue. That cushion has been absorbed. In 2017, it was used. And so, going forward in 2018, there remains no cushion left in this system, in this region. So, this is what we've suggested, because the state has said you have to have a cushion. CMS says you have to have a cushion. There has to be a reserve. There has to be a risk plan. If there's no risk plan at all, you can't function, period. So, while there's been suggestions that we dump in five, $10 million from various sources, that is not possible. It's not practical, and we don't think we're legally obligated to do that. So, what we have designed is this concept of the auxiliary ISF, which is a separate distinct fund apart from the LRE, but which is made available for purposes of drawing on if it's needed. How is it funded? We've gone to community participants and stakeholders to identify who's interested and willing and has a stake in this success and stability for purposes of providing tentative funding. Two CMHs have tentatively committed. We have eight providers that have tentatively committed. Two counties, and you're one of them, by the way, that we are approaching for purposes of assisting in that funding. And there are two foundations who have indicated that they're participating or willing to participate. So, if at the end of operating 2018, there are operating deficits, there needs to be a risk plan to stand behind that. That is what that fund is for. If it is a $2 million deficit, there would be a draw request made to the auxiliary fund to commit to $2 million. That money would in turn be sent over to the ISF fund at the LRE and then available to cover those operating deficits. Now, this is not a payment of funds. Payment of funds would be simple, just send us $1.5 million check. It is not that. It is not a loan of money either, because a loan doesn't meet the requirements of a risk plan. It is a conditional identification of funds that would be available if the need arises. We have said further that in order to do this, though, that our participants need to have a mechanism that they can rely upon for payback. So, we need to know that there's a capability of being paid back. And that's where this bonus fund comes in. That is the one set of revenue that the state has said may be used for purposes of paying back if you make a draw. We may not make a draw at the end of this year. We may. If we make a draw, the state has said, yes, you may use that fund in order to pay back whoever participates. That fund is at about, I think it's 0.75 percent of gross revenue, so that's about a $2 million revenue stream that's available to us per year. Now, you can see if we cap this at 2 million, which is what we're proposing to do, capping a $2 million contribution, and you've got a $2 million flow coming back in, you know, why do you need to do this? Because you're spending dollars on paper. Yes, I, I got that. But, the, the rule is still the rule. We need a risk plan. We need to have a pool. We need to have the capacity to draw on it. So, that's what we're ultimately going to be asking of the county, is to consider a request to participate in this pool, in this auxiliary fund, at the, at the amount of 1.5 million, with the understanding that it'll be prorated. So, if we cap it at 2 million with all participants, I think that's about 840,000 is then the maximum participation, with the understanding that if it is a draw, if there is a contribution made, it would be proposed to be paid back within one, no more than two years from this fund revenue. So, that's, that is going to be detailed with the contract. We're looking at the specifics of the contract. I'm not sure when, when it has the schedule to go back more specifically, in a couple of weeks to the Finance Committee?
Yes, the next Finance Committee meeting is when is planned, as soon as we see the contract and have the details from the LRE.
Okay. So, that's the, that's the funding framework in which we've designed this auxiliary fund. And I'll have, unless there's questions, now I'll have Jeff address a little bit of the chronology and how this thing works.
Do you want to ask questions now? I see hands up. Okay. Commissioner, answer us. I saw yours first.
Phil Harold, last. Stan, you mentioned a $2 million cap.
Yes.
Is, is there going to be caps then within the individual component of this? How much an individual can?
By the way, here's some color. Yeah, there would be a cap. What we're looking at, again, if you look at the upper right here, the participants, we call them the participating community stakeholders, that have at least discussed a willingness to consider contributing to this. The two CMHs, that's the Network 180 and Ottawa County, each of them are proposing to contribute 250,000 each. The foundations are making asks of $500,000 each. The providers vary between 5,000 and 25,000 each. And then, the counties, Ottawa County is proposing another 500,000 on top of the 250 that the, the CMH is contributing. So, all of those will ultimately add up to whatever they add up to. And what we're saying is, if that's a full 3.5 million, we are proposing to the state in our submission to them, we still would cap it at the repayment ability. So, if the state agrees that we can repay out of more than two years out of this, then we could go higher up to the full amount of the contribution commitment. If they won't, and we only have one year of payback on this bonus that's agreed to, then we'll cap it at what that one-year payback is, so that we can represent to whoever participates. You'll be in at your percentage of whatever the cap is. If it's 2 million, you're in at your percentage. So, it could go down to 840. If more participants come in, it go down, it could go down even further.
I could, a real quick follow-up. As far as the billing practices, is the billing from these providers in this framework going to be the same as they would for anybody else? Different scale of how much they can charge? Does that make sense?
Well, the providers who are agreeing to participate in this, really, the only, the only reason to participate is out of some sense of either moral commitment to assure the stability that these services are provided, or to assure that there is the system of funding that they rely upon. So, their contributions are really out of their undedicated funds. There's no obligation beyond their commitment to do it, and it will not impact what they charge or what it costs the system to have them participate. And we've kept those levels pretty low, too. And for $5,000, it's more interesting to the state to know that they're supporting the system than 5,000. 5,000 would be gone, I think.
Commissioner Voorhees, then.
Thank you, Chair Hennessy. Stan, thank you for your work on this. I've called you sometimes to get entities that are concerned what's happening here and there. In my, my few years of experience in this government stuff, whenever we talk about consolidation, usually, the, the, the larger entity in it takes the whipping. I, I like the principle of one person, one vote. I like the principle, one dollar of cost goes equal to all. Kent County has got more enrollees than all the other six counties combined, and I'm, I'm concerned that we don't end up being, being the cash drawer for the whole region. And so, what, what do you see as some type of protections in there on that? Is there something that can be done?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, for a number of reasons, we want to be sensitive to not getting disproportionate in the contribution or participation by any of our stakeholders. For example, if we had gone to Kent County saying, you are, you represent about 55 percent of the enrollees in the entire region, so you ought to be contributing 55 percent of this. We haven't done that. I think that if this, if the county were to approve a maximum contribution level of 1.5 million, the maximum would be about 40 percent participation. So, you will not exceed your actual level of enrollees in the entire system at that level. Now, we, we have not built in here a, in the final contract, a cap that would say not to exceed, percentage-wise, not to exceed our percentage of the overall enrollment percent, which we could do, if that would be of some value. I, I don't think we're even going to come close to those, but we could put that in there and say, look, it's as an additional protection to make sure that that doesn't happen.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stan, appreciate your work on this. I think it's a very complicated issue, and you're working with a lot of different departments, and it just kind of makes me rethink this whole regionalization philosophy that's been going on. But, as far as the capitation, I have a couple of questions. It's a capitated rate, so it's paid on a per-member basis, and we have about half of that. In, in my day job, when we're faced with those things, I find that our reimbursements get ratcheted down and our costs keep going up. Are you experiencing that with this?
Yes. I mean, that's one of the pressures on this system, is that the cost of the mandated services rarely go down. We're able to maybe address mechanisms of how services are provided and, and in what form they're provided, but the actual cost, for example, of an inpatient hospitalization in this region frankly is well above the state average. So, we, we pay a lot more money for these services than what other regions pay. But, now, the capitated rate only goes up to the LRE. That's where it stops. All the distribution of funds downstream to the CMHs, such as Network 180, is not a capitated payment. It's a, it's a payment for services.
Oh, it's a fee for, it's a fee for service.
It's a payment for the cost that they incur to provide the services.
Got it, got it. That clears that up. Okay.
That's why the LRE is the one holding the bag, if it costs too much.
And can you give me a little background? When we, when this first started, the LRE, did they have a fund balance of 12 million?
It had a, so, this, this reserve fund, which I say is a critical component of the stability of this system, requires it to be properly sized. And I, and others, don't think it was ever properly sized. It was whatever the amount of money that the five members had available when the state says come together, they put their funds in. Was it enough? I mean, it never made the, made the 7.5 percent target that the state suggested, but it was what it was. I think it was about 11 million.
That was close.
Yeah, you're pretty close. So, kudos for that.
Well, my point is, it's just amazing to me how fast things can turn.
Oh, sure.
And this is just one of those situations where you head into it with a 12 million dollar, and now it's gone. And...
We had 25 million lost last year. So, you can see in a 260 million dollar income stream, if the state sets the rate just a little too tight for us in one year, over 260 million dollars, you, you can see those kinds of losses. And that's why the reserve is supposed to be there. It's just not large enough to be able to cushion through those.
Yeah, I'm just a budget hawk, that's all.
Yep. Well, and this is the conversation we're continuing with the state, because we continue to believe the state has a, has a primary obligation to see that those funds around the state are properly funded, and, and we don't believe that they have.
It is, is, is just me with this opinion, but it seems the state is continually pushing things down to the county level and expecting us to carry the burden of that. You see that happening here? You see that happening here, that there is just like a concerted effort?
Well, it depends on the issue. I mean, my sense is that if it's too sticky and too messy, it gets pushed down. If it looks good, they'll keep it.
Of course. Well, thank you for your work on this, Stan.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch base on three points. The first is, our alternative to this is doing nothing and having the state take everything over. Is that correct?
That would be one alternative, is to do nothing, and the state would take it over and implement an alternative structure, the design of which has not been disclosed, because I don't think it exists. So that's part of the ambiguity of letting this move forward without an alternative, is there really is no other solution for us to evaluate. Would it be stable? I don't know. I think at a minimum, it would be an incredible disruption, because we wouldn't even know yet what that looks like. We do have some sense that it would likely be a contract with a private health plan to take it over. And as a consequence, the public component of this system would be lost. Right now, the LRE is driven by a public board, a board that has representation from each of the CMH members, as well as the community. So that, at a minimum, we're quite certain would be lost.
And then the other question I have, when I look at the other counties that participate in the LRE, why do we only see two for potential participating counties instead of everyone?
Well, it's a good question. I think that in the conversation with our CMH members and their counties, you would hear back, as we have, that there's another way to participate in this, and that is to go directly to the cost of service basis and use all of your available resources to reduce the cost of service. The ISF is only drawn when the cost of service exceeds the revenue. So if they will bring their cost of service down, that also gets us closer to the target. Now, they could just leave the cost of service where it is and say, all right, we'll put another 250,000 in as well. So that's one response that we have heard. And as a consequence, a number of our other CMH members simply have no more capacity, and we're convinced that they don't have additional capacity. And the other is, the 298 program, which is sort of weaving its way through here, also implicates what we're able to do. Two of these five members are identified as 298 pilots. There are three pilots, there's actually four, Kent County has one, but it's a demonstration model. Three of the... Two of the... There are three other pilots, and Health West and West Michigan are identified as one of those pilots. So they are really one step away from being taken out of this region. If that pilot does proceed, their funding mechanism will go through the health plans, and they will not participate in this. So it's difficult to go to them and say, look, you are on the verge of moving an entirely different system, and then you ought to commit to that. So that's the best answer I have for that.
So other entities in the state, we certainly can't be alone, right?
We are not alone in the sense that there are 10 PHPs. Each of those PHPs function in a very similar way, up to the point of the distribution. They all use different methodologies for distributing their funds to their CMHs, but they all receive capitated funds. They all must have an ISF. And frankly, nine of the 10 took major hits against their ISF last year. Some of them took larger hits than we did, in absolute dollars, even though the percentage may not have been as great. None of them actually absorbed all of their ISF. At least two of them came very close. And if we experienced another year like we did this year in 2018, they too would be in the same position.
So there's some that can follow where we are, that they could be in the same boat, potentially, depending on how their year goes this year?
It's potential, yes. And that's why I think that the state is on the verge of finally doing a supplemental funding. We've been pushing that for quite some time, and it's our belief that the state is going to supplement some funding because of what we call the DAB enrollment problem, to put additional funds across the state. That will help, but we still have struggles. We think Healthy Michigan continues to be underfunded year to year. It's costing us more money to provide the services than they pay us. That'll be true this year. And we continue to believe that they're not funding the ISF system properly. We need more money put into the system to cover that pool. I did want to give Jeff just a couple of minutes to run through the chronology, so you can see in sequence how this tended to run.
Hi, everybody, thank you. So as Stan kind of stated, we have a timeline of kind of when we have to have things in motion for the state's acceptance of our risk plan. So the first piece is, our goal was to get an agreement by all the parties that we've identified by June 20th to commit to this process. Essentially, they gave us till June 30th to get everything done and settled, so that they can approve the risk plan in full. So June 20th was kind of our date that we picked to meet that obligation for the state. The second piece of it is, so July 1st, essentially, all the stakeholders would set aside these dollars in their own funds, held at each of the entities, so it's not sent to the LRE or anything like that. At that point, it's just set aside as a commitment level. September 30th is our fiscal year end. So at that point, we would know kind of where we're at, but again, it takes a few months to get through all the claims processing and to figure out where we actually end up for that fiscal year. So between September and March, we have a couple of reports due to the state. We have an interim report that we send to them in November, that kind of gives an indication of where we think we're going to be at. And then we have a final report due to them on February 28th. So at that point, on February 28th, when we get those reporting pieces all set, by March 15th, we determine where we ended up for the fiscal year. So at that point, we would know if there's a deficit or a surplus within the region, and if we would need to call on the stakeholders to help fund the auxiliary ISF at that point. So pretty much that same timeline would be, we'd be able to notify everybody if there was a need. Going into that, by March 30th, we determine, well, actually, we already have the commitment amount, so we'd know what the prorated share is by each one of the stakeholders. As Stan said, the max piece right now for Kent County would be about 840,000. So the last day for the LRE to make a request to the people would be May 1st for the stakeholders. And that would be the final... At that point, we'd have a couple of different pieces going on between March 30th and May 1st to help with that process. We have our financial audits that we do typically end of February, early March, and then we have a compliance audit that also goes back and confirms all of our numbers. And that's done usually in the month of April. So that May 1st is, we'd have a definite of where we ended up for the fiscal year. And at that point, on May 1st, 2019, we'd also receive that performance incentive bonus that Stan had talked about, which essentially would be about a $2 million cap that we'd be getting, potentially a little bit more from the state, that we could use to repay the stakeholders at that point. And then by May 15th, we'd have to have the confirmation of that piece, and we'd be able to pay all the stakeholders back from that bonus. So that bonus is one bonus. It's pretty much the only funds right now that the state has identified that would be a local-type dollar that we can use to pay back something like this. Otherwise, all the other funding we get is Medicaid or Healthy Michigan. And they've been adamant that we can't use those funds to help pay back any type of situation like this. So before I move over to the stakeholder piece, any questions on the timeline?
Commissioner Jones.
I have one that is timeline-related. So we go through all of this. Let's say, just hypothetically, you have to draw on it, the state pays us back. Are we not in the same boat we are right now with having a zero auxiliary fund balance again? I mean, isn't that potentially how that math could work?
That's why you're the chair. So yes, absolutely so. Now, this is only one strategy that we're implementing. The other is moving to a RFP process to manage the LRE going forward. So starting with fiscal year 2019, the proposal that we're working on is to identify a managed care entity that would take over the responsibilities that are currently being performed by in-house staff at the LRE, and to provide the funding for this risk pool going forward. So this is a one-year gap to get us to that structure. So yes, the LRE would not have it, per se, but our contracted MCE should have it.
Where exactly would they get the money from?
Well, let's say it's... I'm not predicting who it's going to be. Let's say it's Beacon, a national company proven capability of administering behavioral health across the country with substantial financial capacity. For them to come in and bid here successfully, they'd have to demonstrate that they're capable of holding an account sufficient to equal about 7.5% of our revenue. They don't have to use it, they just have to hold it. So do they have that capacity? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I'm not saying they're the successful bidder, because that decision has been made yet.
Any other questions before we continue with the program?
Okay, so the last slide that we have here is the... So as of right now, these are the current participants that we've been talking to in the commitment levels. So Kent County would be, the 1.5 million would be about 42% of the fund. Ottawa County and Ottawa CMH, again, they're both part of the same system, but about 21% combined for the two of them. Network 180 has committed $250,000 from their unreserved fund balance. We've been speaking to two of the foundations here in Grand Rapids. So we have the Grand Rapids Foundation and the Doug DeVos Foundation. Both of those have been talking about the $500,000 level with each. Again, these aren't finalized yet, because they're still going through the process of going through their boards, and there's those timelines that we've been looking at to meet the June 30th timeline. We've had commitments from Arbor Circle, Pine Rest. We're still working on Hope Network. They haven't given us a final number yet, but the minimum commitment level was 5,000. We have ORE that's over in Ottawa County for 25,000. Spectrum Services, Pioneer Resources, and Goodwill have all committed 5,000 each. So at this point, the ISF reserve, if everybody were to come through with the pieces identified here, would be about 3.5 million. So that commitment level that Stan had talked about earlier, the 2 million would be our cap. So at that point, we do the percentage of the overall piece of this. So Kent County would be 42%. As you can see on the right-hand side, we broke down each one of the percents for each one of the members. But if the state were to allow us to use two years' worth of payback instead of just the one year, then of course we could draw more if needed. But at that point, we're right now keeping it a $2 million cap.
Follow-up question?
Yep, I'm back. So Stan, you mentioned that a few of these entities might be ending up leaving if their pilots are approved successful, remember?
Yeah, none of these entities are on that list.
Correct. But out of Kent, Alleghan, Ottawa, Muskegon, Lake, and Oceana, which ones are potentially not going to be part of it anymore?
Yeah, so Muskegon County, which is Health West, is their name of their CMH, and West Michigan, which is the consortium of Lake, Oceana, and Mason County. Those counties would be, have been identified as 298 pilot programs. So that was originally scheduled to be implemented starting this year, beginning in the next fiscal year. That's been pushed back one year, I believe. So they are clearly going to be in the box for the next fiscal year, but then the year after that, probably not.
So the name that's missing, then, is Alleghan, right?
Alleghan is not on this list, that's correct.
Correct, why is that?
It is because Alleghan is one of the entities that did aggressively address, on the cost side of this equation, to the point of significant pain. And I think that we've accepted that they've incurred about as much pain as they can tolerate in reducing their cost of operations in order to get this down to the point where our projected operating deficit is low enough to be addressed by a $2 million pot.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point? Do you have more for us?
Talk all day, but I hope you're enough.
I have a question. Where would we... Where is Kent County? What fund... Where do we come up with 840,000 if that's what the ask will be?
We'll look at our general fund, determine where we might move money for this period of time that we would set aside for it. So we'll have to identify a source. We haven't determined that, but we won't find that out. We'll bring that to you, once we've taken a closer look at it.
Could it put other programs that were currently operating at risk?
I don't think so. I don't think so. It's a class cash flow issue for us, is what that would be at this point.
Out of the fund reserve, possibly?
Yes. So we would take a look at that. We would come back.
It's a one-time cost.
Yes. And at this point, it would be funds that would be returned back to the source that the funds came from.
So given the timeline we just saw, does that mean that we're going to see an action item pretty immediate?
Yes, it would be the next finance committee meeting. We would suspect that you would see a request back in front of you at the next finance committee.
With the proposed contract, so we addressed this issue that Commissioner Voorhees has identified. We received a review from council, so the idea would be that let's see what it looks like in black and white.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into the design. Has this been actuarially assessed?
Well, my thinking is actuaries sit in a closet somewhere and think in the abstract, so it's possible, but there's really not a need for this component of the system to be actuarially analyzed.
Okay.
This... The capacity and the viability of the plan is really a balancing and a comparison of the pool of fund in the ISF and the projected operating losses. So if we were projecting a $50 million operating loss, the state would have no interest in us talking about a $2 million ISF. It just wouldn't go nowhere. If our projected operating deficits last year, which were about 25 million, are brought down to about 2 or 3 million, then a $2 million ISF is deemed to be viable response.
Okay, Commissioner Mast.
Well, but I think you... Part of the reason we're only going on a yearly basis is because the state has indicated the way these per-member-per-month payments go, fiscal '19 will have a better reimbursement rate that we get, because they're always based on the prior two years.
Yes, yeah. We are told that the rating, the actuarial rating, which is where the actuaries step in, for 2019 will result in a higher revenue stream to us. But now, that revenue stream is reduced to a capitated payment based upon how many enrollees we have. So you could have a higher rate, but if your enrollees drop, you could still see lower cash. And that's really what we saw with the DAB enrollment. We had, yes, here's the users, they're still up here, but there's fewer participants in the enrollment system, so we're having less cash to pay for the same cost.
And they haven't really corrected that mismatch.
That is what's intended to be corrected, as I understand it, with the supplement that's currently before the legislature.
But that's prior years. I mean, that's '17.
They would... You're correct, that does not fix '17.
It doesn't fix '19, though, either.
Well, it depends what they do for '19. Yeah, we don't know.
Commissioner Melton.
Wait, we could get... I took a picture, because I saw Commissioner Breve do that. I don't normally think those things. But could we get a copy of just this, the stake... Participating community stakeholders?
It's copyrighted, Commissioner, but... I didn't distribute them. I don't know how many have to give enough. Or which part? The second part?
Just this one.
Oh.
Yeah, we've got this, but it would be nice to know who's putting in what.
We can. Ultimately, when we come back for the proposal, we'll have these numbers. That's why we have a cutoff.
Okay.
There still, we just received another one a couple of days ago, so it's still possible that these numbers will go up and down a little bit.
Great, thank you.
So before your 19th, the 19th, the next meeting, you'll have all of this information in a packet for you that has the sources identified, where the participating communities would be. Is that...
Yes.
And that's the point at which this committee would be asked to adopt a resolution for forwarding to the entire board?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this point? I'm sure we will come up with more over the next few weeks before the 19th. Thank you. Thank you very much for all of your work, Commissioner Mast.
You're welcome.
You really put in the time during your tenure there on that particular committee. And Commissioner Mast, I know, has been on the Network 180 board and chaired, has chaired that, and it's been a lot of work. Commissioner Breve is on that board as well. Along with... So we have a strong participation from our commissioner members. We are at miscellaneous comment. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the committee and Vice Chair Hennessy. I had a conflict this morning, so I arrived late to the meeting, and Commissioner Hennessy did a fabulous job. So thank you very much for stepping up for that piece. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other miscellaneous? Are there any other miscellaneous? I was going to mention something, now if I can find it in here, from the administrators' report. We had the community action plans being approved today, and it was interesting to note in your last report that they received a 100% rating.
Yes.
And I think that's really quite remarkable on how we have progressed and how that has, you know, really taken hold over the last couple of years of our really getting very involved from our administrators' level down.
Yes. Susan Savanti's not here. She seems like she's gone, but yet, thanks to Matthew and the team for all of their hard work in moving this forward. Really appreciate what they've done there.
Good, thank you. Any other miscellaneous comment? Then we are set for adjournment. Anybody notion to adjourn? Okay. We're adjourned. And I didn't use the gavel once.